This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm very excited to welcome you to this first part of the meeting, which is our Board of Education recognition program, and we have some wonderful artists who are here to celebrate with us tonight. Tonight, we celebrate in advance of the statewide week recognizing school boards. It's great that there are so many parents here tonight. We're so glad to see you and welcome you any Tuesday night for these meetings. No, you really don't have to, but thank you very much for coming tonight to help honor the Board of Education. I have a couple of different things that I'd like to read. I'll skip through a lot of the "whereas's," but would like to tell you that the Governor did offer a proclamation recognizing the week of October 22nd to the 26th, that we should have special activities and programs in communities across the state to observe School Board Recognition Week, and it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Andrew Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, proclaims October 22nd to the 26th, or here in Brighton, this week, School Board Recognition Week. So congratulations to all of you, and I will summarize the "whereas's" with our heartfelt thanks for your service on behalf of our kids each and every day. This school board, many of you may or may not know, serves in a volunteer capacity elected by you and the community, a wonderful last vestige of the democratic process where they literally, since the beginning of schools in New York State, when they were deciding how much coal to purchase, what school teacher, visiting school teacher to have in a one-room schoolhouse, making those day-to-day kinds of decisions, have progressed to an elective body focused on policy and providing for the education of all the kids in our community, representing your very diverse interests in providing that education. So we're very proud of their service. They spend countless hours outside of this room. It's estimated that school board members spend between six and eight hours, this is across the state, serving on 700 school boards across the state, that's outside of meeting time, learning more about the things that we're doing with kids, spending time in classrooms with kids, and in a wide variety of professional development activities, so they can best support you, represent you as parents and community members, and do anything they can to support you as students. So we thank you for your service, and we do have a gift which we will give you at the end as well, on behalf of the kids of this district, and ask you to take a look at that. Also represents the great heart that is done for our kids here. So, thank you for all that you do. Thank you for being great school board members. Here's to all of you. I'd like to introduce Judy Wagner, the President of Brighton Teachers Association, who will just say a few words as well, on behalf of our staff here. I'd like to recognize how Judy was here-
Well, if Judy were here, she would say-
Judy was here just a second ago, so actually, like Emily Minerva, on behalf of the Brighton PTSA, if she would like to say a few words.
Hello. I'm Emily Minerva. I'm the President of the PTSA this year. And I should keep it brief and just thank the Board of Education for all the hard work they do, but I was a little angry, and I started thinking about the importance of public education to our community and society. I love history. I'm glad you referenced history there, Dr. McGowan, thinking about how important it is for a community to be involved, and how important the school is to the community, and the community to the school. And I had a quote from John Adams from 1785, where he said, "The whole people must take upon themselves the education of the whole people, and be willing to bear the expenses of it. There should not be a district of one mile square without a school, and it not founded by a charitable individual, but maintained at the public expense of the people themselves." And I thought, supporting public education is an exercise in citizenship itself. And the Board of Education contributes your time. The Parents Teacher Association contributes our time. Euro volunteers, rural volunteers, trying to make the school better. We hope everyone will get involved. And we have a gift we wanted to give on behalf of the PTSA, to the Board of Education, to the Brighton Food Cupboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily, thank you very much for your kind words, and we're very happy to accept this very generous donation to the Brighton Food Cupboard in honor of the Board of Education. So thank you very much, and for all those that join PTSA, support PTSA, and do that work every single day, thank you so much.
And so, I know that Judy Wagner would like to say a few words, but we'll turn over to Dr. Wiener to jump in now. Go ahead, Dr. Wiener.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Dr. McGowan, and ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My remarks early on in the meeting will be very brief, hopefully the ones at the end will be brief also, but I want to just say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. It's such a blessing to work in a community represented by you as members of the Board, who are so committed to kids, whether it's kids in the arts, or kids in the science classroom, or in the English Language Arts classrooms. Everything that you do is focused specifically on kids and learning, and I just want to say, as a dad, as well as an employee, thank you for all the work that you do behind the scenes as volunteers to make Brighton such an amazing place to work, to live, and to raise a family. So, thank you very much. We have several presentations tonight to give you a sincere thanks in the form of music. So, we're going to start off tonight with a brief presentation from Council Rock. This is from Mrs. Button, and Mrs. Gallagher's classrooms, with a very catchy song.
Council Rock Music. I'm Miss Button, and I've been here, this is my ninth year now, still having a wonderful time, and my 12th year in Brighton. And, Council Rock, generally in the fall, we spend a lot of time exploring. We explore instrument sounds and timbres, and we explore moving to the beat, we explore connecting to the beat with our voices, movement, playing instruments. Then, from here on, we go on, and we get even more in-depth in those areas of combining patterns together, working at putting together pieces that we can share out with our parents and our community. One, two, sing, go!
Hi, I'm Mrs. Gallagher. I'm here to Council Rock this year, and in first grade, we are working on differentiating between study beat and rhythm, and we've been using these boom whackers. These boom whackers were brought with me from a social media brand, where donorschoose.com, that I did previously to come to Council Rock. In our song, we use study beats and rhythms with different colored boom whackers and iconic notation, to be able to play a familiar song, Twinkle Twinkle. Here we go.
Sorry. I'm having trouble with the connection. Please try again in a- So, please, come and come visit anytime. Come down and make music with us. It's always a really joyful place.
So, if you ever get the chance, stop on down to Council Rock and check out the Boom Whackers. That's what they're called. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Aishen, and French Road Director.
Hi, I'm Lori Aishem, and I teach fourth and fifth grade string instruments, and I have a group of three wonderful girls who are going to play a song for you today called "The Eerie Canal," and I will have them introduce themselves.
I'm Robin Jones.
I'm Jade Lennio.
And I'm Nora Heller.
So, that's our track. That's what we're doing. Have to do something to it? It's okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry about the logistics. This is a combined group. We have mostly 12 Corners kids, but we have some French Road kids, and we have some kids who are transitioned between French Road. Number of these kids played this piece that we're going to play in All County last year, which is a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade group, and so, some of them just got it this year, some of it played it, some of them played it last year, and the piece is "Shoken Farewell."
We're losing our audience.
All right, so up next, we have our double re duo, Marley Deberger on bassoon, and Mary Liz McAdam on oboe. They're both members of our eighth grade band. They're fantastic, and they're going to be playing an arrangement of "The Gossip Goodbye."
Hello. While the crazy pitches are getting set up, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Sarah Stavel, and I'm so proud to have the crazy pitches here to sing for you today. They're one of three a cappella groups at the high school, and as I say every year, I can't think of a better example of the work that so many are doing in so many departments with your support. The a cappella groups are a way that our students are able to show mastery and excellence beyond the classroom, truly driven by their passions, and that's a really unique experience for them, and it's only because of the work that you do from the top down. So, we are really grateful to you for that opportunity to show you this performance tonight. So, here's Maile.
Hi. First, we'd like to thank the Board of Education for their continuous support of the arts, and allowing our a cappella groups to exist in the Brighton Central School District. You've given us a platform to create a community compass by art and music. Your encouragement is appreciated entirely. Thank you. We're excited to perform for you. We'll be singing "Human" by Ragged Bone Man, arranged by Eric DeBord.
Oh, some people got the real problems. Some people are hard. Some people think I'm so hard. Lord, heavens above. I'm only human after all. I'm only human after all. Don't put the blame on me. Don't put the blame on me. I'm only human to make sense. I'm only human to call it. Don't put the blame on me. Don't put the blame on me. 'Cause I'm no prophet on the Zion. You should go need somewhere high. I'm only human after all. I'm only human after all. Don't put the blame on me. Don't put the blame on me. I'm only human. I do what I can. I'm just a man. I do what I can. Don't put the blame on me. Don't put the blame on me.
So, Mrs. Judy Wagner, on behalf of the Brighton Teachers Association, if you wanted to step right up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy Wagner. I'm the President of the Brighton Teachers Association, and I can't tell you how proud I am to have just listened to all of our student performers, and recognized the great talent that they're so excited to share with all of us, because, quite frankly, because of the work you do. So, thank you to them and to their music teachers who helped to prepare those performances. So, I'm here to say, I think with everyone else, although I'm not going to sing it, so that's good news, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you who serve on our Board of Education on this night, a night of recognition, but I can tell you that our Brighton Teachers Association thanks you every day of the week, every day of the month, every day of the year, for all of your efforts. And so, I have a certificate that I'll be giving to each one of you, and it states that in the year 2018, Brighton Board of Education Recognition Night, the Brighton Teachers Association, including over 350 nurses, teachers, and academic support instructors, on this day, Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, and every day, we acknowledge and applaud our members of the Brighton Board of Education in your continued efforts and support of our students, our faculty, our staff, and our Brighton families. And the Brighton Teachers Association would like to honor your work by making a $100 contribution to Owen's House. And as you know, Owen Thomas, a graduate of Brighton, lost his life just a year or so ago, and we would like to offer this contribution to the amazing efforts of Owen's House, as they provide support to families in need. So, thank you for being here, for being present, for being great supporters of us, especially those in the Teachers Association, for encouraging us, for allowing us to innovate, for inspiring us to continue to be creative, and to reach out and learn more about our craft, and supporting us in every way, and your presence at the different events that we know you attend. That's, we notice, and it is much, much appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Judy, thank you very much. On behalf of the Board, to you and to the entire teaching staff, Teachers Association, we appreciate the thanks. What a wonderfully appropriate gift of thanks, too, and the donation to Owen's House. We certainly appreciate that gesture. And thank you for you, to you and to everyone, for the work that you folks do each and every day, in service to all of our students and families in Brighton. We sincerely appreciate that. And to everybody this evening, all of our performing arts, our performing groups, all of our teachers, our Parent Teachers Association, the recognition is wonderful. We appreciate it. We all do what we do because we love it. We love Brighton. We love being here. We love helping out, and it's just one of those highlights of the year. And it's just one of those highlights of the year, and probably we should do not so much the thanks part, but the performance part and having our students parade through maybe about once every month or so, just as a sort of reminder of what we're here for and what we all do. And it's just a great night and a great event. So thank you for everybody that planned things, to put things together, and for sharing everything with us this evening. So thank you very much.
So the kids performing might be the best example, actually, of this whole notion of representative democracy and how we echo and represent a community that values the arts a great deal, and make sure that when we do plan in the budget process throughout the year, that that's a big part of our planning, too. That's clearly been expressed to you, and then as board members, you bring that to the table like you do so many other important issues in this community for us to be thinking about on a day-to-day basis. So we thank you for your service and support of the arts, but in all of the different ways that you represent the community in shaping policy and shaping the great work that happens for kids each day. So this is a gift also in the same vein, on behalf of the district, for each one of you, and I would definitely encourage you to take a look at it now. So it's a yes. Go right ahead.
Just like the kids, we can rip the...
I say yes because Marv wants to.
It was either this or we were all going to sing, and that just never would have worked out.
Can we say who created the yard?
Yep, absolutely. So this is by Nathan Daball, created in 2018. And so we're really excited about that. Let's look at the back of the... A little bit of happiness, which is what you share with us all the time. So thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Well, I will tell you this, by certainly happenstance, Nate and his mom Nicole live across the street from me, and I had no idea that his art was chosen, but thank you to them. And they're wonderful supporters, by the way, of the district and all that we do. So this is just such a great gift. The last few years now, I think you've gone out of your way, working with all of our folks to try to find pieces of art from our students for us, and we all appreciate it. Certainly this, along with the generous donation from the PTSA to the Food Curb, a wonderful donation from the Teachers Association to Owen's House, just a great night of celebration. So we thank everybody, and it's just, where else would you rather be than right here right now, right? So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So we will give a brief... I think most of the folks who were finished for the evening probably left, but if you feel the need to exit at this point in time to attend to studies or other family events this evening, please go ahead and do so. At this point, we will call our meeting to order as we begin the rest of our formal regular meeting for this evening. We will offer the opportunity here in a moment for public participation. Any members of the audience here with us, any members of the public here with us who wish to comment to the Board, make a statement, or ask a question if the Board may do so at this point in time, we ask that you raise your hand and be recognized. Also, if you have a question or a comment you would like to leave in writing, there are cards and pencils over on the table next to the door. You're welcome to leave a message for us that will be answered at a future date. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to ask a question or make a statement of the Board at this point in time? Okay, seeing that we have no one for that purpose. Prior to asking for approval of the agenda this evening, I would like to briefly make a comment. Town Councilperson Jim Vogel passed away. He, 80 years old, after battling quite a while lengthy disease, and we send our condolences, our best wishes to his family and friends. Jim was just a tremendous supporter of Brighton in many ways, of our district in every way, really a lifelong record of service to his country, through the Marine Corps, and decades in the town of Brighton. Served on multiple committees over the years. There wasn't a thing involving the town that he wasn't involved with. And we appreciate all of his efforts, like I say, on behalf of the town, but certainly on behalf of the school district, and we send our condolences and our best wishes to his family and friends. So with that, please, I would like a motion to approve our agenda this evening.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, for approval of minutes from the September 25th meeting.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Andrea. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions to those? All right then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Oh, I will make note, I forgot this portion of a slight amendment to the agenda. Actually, Kim is already correcting online. It was a number in order, numerical order, that you may have seen on there, so that just cleans that up. The second item, five, becomes six and seven there. This evening, we do have an item of business prior to a report, and that is the acceptance of our annual financial statements. So first, let's have a motion, please, to approve those statements.
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry. And then I'll ask Lou Alimo to step up to the podium, and Lou is going to give us a brief overview. I will briefly comment that the Audit Committee, which consists of Larry, Karen, and myself, met with Lou and Dahlia and Ray Weiger, our auditor, one of our auditors, in session this evening, Audit Committee, prior to the meeting. We did review all of these financial statements in Audit Committee, along with a number of other items, but we had Ray, and we discussed the items that you'll see this evening in much more detail and much more length, and we'll record out that at a later date. So Lou.
Great. Good evening. So this evening, the Board of Education has asked to accept our financial statements prepared by our independent external auditor. Those statements are in a prescribed format. So what I thought I'd do tonight is just put them in a format that the Board of Education sees on a more regular basis, on a monthly basis, in the Treasuries Report, and then really talk about how the results of these financial statements follows up on our discussion with the capital project planning from last board meeting. So here's just a summary of expenditures by object. You can see overall, our spending went down 1.3%. Large decrease on the supplies and services. A big portion of that is the transfer to capital, and I'll talk about that in just a second. Absent that change in the capital transfer and the capital allocation, spending would have increased about 2%. This is our dashboard, essentially, what the Board looks at on a regular basis, monthly basis, just shows some of the significant cost items that the district accounts for and what contributed to the overall increase of the 2%. Health insurance, a primary cost driver, million-dollar increase of 9%, offset by retirement, partially offset by retirement. So overall, our benefit expense increased 3.4%, which compared to industry trends is a favorable comparison. Looking at our BOSIs, you could see some of the significant changes in BOSIs. Special education, I know, decreased there of $335,000. That's a credit to our in-house programs to be able to provide more services in district. So there's other cost offsets to that, but credit to our special education team and to our building teams. On the other side, all the other objects that represent that $1.8 million decrease, if you look at the capital and transfers, you see that $2.4 million decrease. And if you recall, when we approved the 2017 Brighton Facilities Improvement Plan, we authorized $5.2 million from our capital reserve. So that was an expense in that year. There wasn't a similar type of expense in this year, so you see a decrease. So those are the basic cost drivers of the district in a format that, again, is more recognizable than the prescribed format of the financial statements. Importantly is our results in our fund balance and reserves. So on the left-hand side is essentially our balance sheet with fund balances, and you can see the change year over year. Our biggest portion of our reserves, or the strict portion of our balance sheet, is our capital reserves, and that's something we're very purposeful about in our long-term planning. So that's our technology reserve and our capital reserve. So you can see the changes. On the right-hand side is essentially a roll forward of those reserves. So what we utilized in the current year, we budgeted $800,000 for our retirement contribution reserve, and because of our financial performance, we were able to replenish that and maintain that balance sheet. You see, the other piece of it, most significantly, is the capital. So in May, the voters approved a $1.5 million drawdown for a capital project. We were able to replenish that and then add more money to the capital reserve for future use. And you see that end balance, $9.6 million this year. So that's kind of the jumping off point to our discussion of capital. So last meeting, we talked about the capital project and the status of our capital project, and where we believe we are at this point in time in response to labor shortages across the construction trades and in response to the materials volatility that we're experiencing. So we showed a $5.7 million gap, and we talked about last time that that $5.7 million, because we've exceeded the allowable aid, is all local share. So what I wanted to do tonight is just present to you a plan that would allow us to effectively preserve the program and preserve the scope that we presented to the community in 2017, and lay out a financial plan that allows us to honor the tax impact that we presented to the voters when they weighed in on that project back in 2017. So of that $5.7 million, our OACM team, so our construction team, looked at value engineering options and opportunities at the Council Rock School, and we were able to identify, you know, going through, really, fine tube comb, based on recommendations from our construction manager, opportunities where we could value engineer and reduce costs, and some of the design elements that were contributing to costs. A lot of design elements that had high labor component, we were able to look at those without compromising program. So we feel confident that we've put together a plan that values, or really honors, the program that we set forth to the community, class sizes, square footage, and all the other program requirements that the Council Rock School community built, but we were able to reduce $1 million. So that closed the gap to $4.7 million. What the Board of Education was able to do because of our financial performance this year was authorize the transfer to our capital fund. So we talked about, I was hoping that would reduce our future debt, but because of the budget overages, that will act to just offset any increases to local share. If we're able to have the same performance or achieve the same performance in 2018-19, which I expect we should be able to, you know, building a consistent, or maintaining a consistent budget methodology, we should be able to replenish $1.5 million more at the end of 2018-19. And then we would ask the voters to draw down the additional money that we put into the capital reserve to balance the tax impact out at $1.7 million. So we use existing reserves and existing financial position to honor that tax impact and still very much honor the program and the scope that we put forward to the voters. Any questions on that?
We're still clear.
Yeah, I think, you know, Lou, first of all, thank you very much, and as we talked about last meeting, you know, the aspect of this project, when we went to the voters and voters approved it, the key element, of course, is the complete rebuild of Council Rock into a full K-2 building, at full decay in the entire primary years. And that's very important and remains a key element of what we do. Unforeseen at the time, and even though we've got great architects and engineers and construction management folks, along with other folks advising us on financing and bonding and whatnot, the severe labor shortages that are happening all over our country in terms of skilled trades, material shortages, and increasing costs of many materials. So I think that our construction managers and the owner, engineer, architects, construction management group that Larry sits on represents the Board, that you folks meet frequently, I think you're doing great work keeping, you know, eyes on the prize, and these adjustments are going to have to be looked at all the time on a near-daily basis, and it's typical of project work this size. So, you know, I think prudent management over the years, from a financial standpoint, of the capital reserves of all the reserve funds, along with the surplus and budgeting systems that we have in place, allow us to not easily maneuver through this, but keep moving forward, you know, without going back to the taxpayers. And so we appreciate your leadership on that, and everybody's working hard on that, so...
I think that's very important. I can't understate the volatility right now. Our construction management firm shared with us that there'll be public investment in construction over the next couple of years, is $450 million. And that's just public sector investment, aside from private sector investment.
We're talking about Monroe County.
Monroe County. So $450 million of construction in Monroe County, you know, we're competing with all that works. So the labor shortage is real, it's significant, something we have to watch very carefully. And then the materials availability, steel, glass, is all very significant. So when we talk about, you know, concerns that we have, those are two very large concerns that we have to monitor throughout the course of the project. But our opportunity is, and kind of the tailwinds, as Mr. Davis says, is we have a strong financial position, we're, you know, we're prepared, as long as we stay disciplined in our budgeting practices, and earmark our reserves appropriately to be able to weather that storm, you know, hopefully we can achieve everything we want to.
Yeah, I would say this, they're called estimates for a reason, right? So we find out after the fact how close we're, and we've been doing a very good job with that, I think. The other piece I'd say is, as we go through that value engineering piece, you're sort of seeing where you can trim back without affecting what you're actually trying to do, and whether it was Principal Tappin or the buildings guys themselves, we're in that room, we're all doing it together. So really appreciate that nobody felt like they lost anything. We got some great input from the buildings people as well, like, don't cut that because that'll create more expense for us down the road, or yeah, we can give back on this little bit. So found that feedback to be very valuable.
Well, and to be, you know, be upfront with folks, too. Many people may not be aware, but Larry's background, his personal professional life, he's Director of Facilities for Paychecks, and he's fully immersed right now in multiple facilities projects for Paychecks. And so him bringing that expertise into what we do is really important to what we do on a daily basis, too. So we appreciate that. And the other thing is, we've made, all of us have made the commitment to transparency to the voters of Brighton, so that we will continue to receive regular updates in our public meeting sessions and discuss these issues as they come up as we move forward. All right. Thank you very much, Lou. We have a motion and a second then for acceptance of all of our annual financial statements, which that's sort of a little bit out of that, but the annual financial statements that we were given today by our auditing firm. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now for our annual report on the visual and performing arts, an update to all things...
Didn't we just get that?
Going out, we got it from the students. Now we're going to hear from Dr. Leener, and he's going to go more in the verbiage behind all of that, so.
He's smiling. That's all he says.
He's his smile.
I'm laughing about Mr. Davis's comment to me a couple of years ago that my speech should be your mic drop.
Yeah.
And he's here, also, we have a number of our faculty here this evening, as we had earlier with the student performances, and we welcome all them, and Dr. Leener.
Well, thank you very much, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to give an update tonight on the visual and performing arts world over the past year and forecast a little bit into the work that we plan on doing for this year. Just again, a thank you goes out to all of our student performers tonight and the teachers that helped them prepare the work that they shared with you, to say thank you for all of your work on their behalf. So thanks again to all of those folks. So as you know, I reported back in the spring that for the 10th year in a row, our community was selected as Best Communities for Music Education, and we've talked about that quite a bit in the past, but I really just wanted to echo that that's a community award. It's not just a music award, it's a full community award. Everyone from parents, teachers, members of the Board of Education, everyone in the community has contributed to that recognition. And a lot of that work is on display publicly in the form of concerts, and I'm very thankful to be able to be at each of those events, and I see many of you, board members, as well, in attendance at those events. And it means an awful lot to me, it means a lot to the teachers that have prepared the students for these events, and it means a ton to the kids as well to see you there and attending. So thank you so much for your support on a day-to-day basis. We greatly appreciate that. These are just some scenes from many of the concerts that we enjoyed this last year. And a shout-out goes out to Mike Struzik and Debbie Parker, who have joined me this evening. They are our music facilitators. Mike facilitates for grades 6 through 12, Debbie K through 5. If I could get a quick round of applause for them. They do a lot of the work behind the scenes to make sure that the kids are ready and all the teachers in the department are prepared and moving in the right direction. So thank you for your work. And Sarah Stabell, hiding in the corner back over there, could we give her a round of applause as well? A lot of the pictures that you see up here are vocal groups, and she leads not only our curricular vocal groups at the high school, but also many men... our curricular vocal groups at the high school, but also many, many of our curricular, our co-curricular groups. These are the volunteer groups of students that come in. They greet me at 7:00 in the morning while they're singing in the hallway outside the auditorium. They stay late at night and prepare all of the work that they do. And it's really a testament to their own dedication, but also they're following the lead of the teachers. So thank you all for the work that you do to support our kids. Oh, I also wanted to mention one thing. You see in the lower left-hand corner, the Brighton Community Band, Dr. Sarah Fisher, who is at TCMS, came up with this idea last year and said, I want to start a community band. Can we support that? I said, absolutely. What's it going to look like? She said, I don't know. But it's going to be people in the community, it's going to be kids, it's going to be teachers. And they had their first conference this August. And it was amazing to watch how that group came together with a couple of rehearsals and performed. So we're looking forward to seeing them perform throughout the year as well, with many, many more events coming from them. And then on the visual side of the performing arts, or the visual side of the visual and performing arts, we have an amazing group of dedicated folks and students that are out in the community, creating work, sharing it with the rest of the community in public exhibitions, in the classroom, and at the school. You received a piece from one of our Front Street students today, a wonderful piece that was done. And I just wanted to select just a couple of pieces to share tonight as well. You can also see a poster from our Grades 1 through 12 Art Show, the second of two shows that we do every single year to show off what the students have done in the work. It's a very nice event. We also have a couple of pictures in here that represent students working on public art. In the lower portion is a mural that was painted over the summer in the Skills Lab to brighten up that space a little bit. And then up towards the top, you see Jed Coons. He couldn't be here tonight, so I put that picture, a selfie, in that we tweeted out. This is a group of students that Jed worked with late in the spring to paint the lacrosse wall that was put up and has been in constant use this last year. The kids were really excited about putting that project together. And we can all enjoy that piece of public art as well. So lots of thanks go out to the visual art folks as well. And in the lower corner, you can see a picture there. That is from one of our in-school field trips where Crazy Dog t-shirts came in. They were working collaboratively with some of our students in the Understanding Design Program, which is a new course we're offering at the high school this year, combining technology and fine arts. And they were working with our students to show them how t-shirt designs are created, and then how you go from ideas in your head to finished product that you can sell on the shelves. So that was a fun field trip for that as well. Also, just a highlight around our summer arts program, 22 years we've been doing summer arts. We put on three shows this year, Wizard of Oz, Lion King Jr., and Aladdin for Kids. Great programs all the way throughout the month of July. Our kids continue to come back for more with this. And we are currently working on how to pull this off without an auditorium next summer. So that will be, we're very excited about the renovation.
You're in the creative business.
We are in the creative business. We make it work. But it's going to present some challenges for us that we're looking forward to figuring out. So 22nd season of that. And now looking forward to our upcoming season in the theater. We have four major productions going on this year. We hope to see everybody at all of them. In a couple of weeks, we're opening our fall play, 45 Seconds from Broadway. It's a fun little play, talks about a group of people that get together at a diner. And the entire set is one set, no set changes throughout the entire thing. Our tech crew has been doing an amazing job. I should tip my hat to the tech crew, by the way. Raina is here. She's our stage manager for the fall play. Everybody say hi, Raina. Never underestimate the power of a amazing tech crew. We did not do you guys justice. We're going to hire you for the set changes next time around. You guys make it look so easy and seamless. But TCMS will follow, 45 Seconds from Broadway, middle of November. And then we're really excited to put on Newsies, it's a brand new show. We're one of the first high schools to put it out there. And then in the spring, we always like to take on something media with a little bit more meaning to it. So we're going to be presenting The Shining Lives. Colleen Parent has taken on the director role for all three of our high school shows this year. Very excited to have her on board and support her throughout the year as she takes on this quite a load for this season. I mentioned a little earlier, VPA in the community is important for us to have a presence out in the community. And we've been really blessed to have a lot of community connections. We're continuing this year with our School of the Arts, BHS Exchange. School of the Arts is hosting this year. And it's become a tradition that's really near and dear to everybody's hearts, where we get a chance to spend a day with students from School of the Arts and the city schools, and just exchange our love for music and present a concert together. We're going to see our art students presenting all over the county again this year, from Nazareth College to Brighton Library and everywhere in between. This past year, Frontier Field was the site of an amazing concert with our band orchestra and chorus performing the National Anthem before a game. I think it was April 25th. And later on in the summer, you can see a picture there up at the top, our very own Dr. Rio receiving the award for the largest crowd at Frontier Field this year. It's kind of become a tradition for us. We also enjoy the New Horizons Intergenerational Concert, performing at the Jazz Band. This year, once again, we have Herb Smith come visit us, trumpet player from Rochester Philharmonic at Eastman School, and our community band that I mentioned earlier. Looking for big things to come out of that group as well. It's fun to see teachers playing alongside students and their parents. And our accomplishments, again, I mentioned earlier, once again, for the 10th year, our community was awarded by the NAMM Foundation Best Community for Music Education. The result of that, 28 students earning Junior High All County Awards, Senior High All County, 19 students will be representing us at All County this year. Conference All State. We have five students and an alternate, which is a really big group that will be traveling, be part of the New York State School Music Association Conference all the way downtown in Rochester Riverside Convention Center. It's a wonderful opportunity for those students, Brian Lynn, Lizzie Verno, Jess Coff, Henry Berger, Dylan McDeClay, and Hayden Lee, to represent us there. Last spring, we had a student, Max Robbins, represent us at the National Band in Florida. And in November, tenor Alex McAnally will be representing us in Orlando, Florida in the National Chorus. That's quite an honor for him and for us as a community. If we could just give those kids a quick round of applause. And finally, things that we're looking forward to. We're looking forward to another full year of events. We have plenty. If you're looking for something to do, pick just about any night in any week, and we'll have something for you. We're once again holding the Solo Festival in TCMS in January, where every student from Monroe County shows up and shows what they can do, hoping to get into those honor ensembles later on. And our professional development, focusing on getting better in our craft. We are focused this year, after our summer work around discussions relative to culturally competent classrooms, we're looking forward to investigating, identifying, and incorporating both windows and mirrors in our arts classrooms, so the kids can see through the windows to see what others' lives are like, but also look through mirrors to see themselves represented in the curriculum. That's work that's an extension of the Curriculum Council from last year, and we're very excited to be engaged in that. We're going to continue our work articulating the essential concepts in the arts and continue writing curriculum to support that work. We are also continuing to work on new initiatives, supporting the Understanding Design Course in the Visual Arts, as well as exploring digital media in both visual and performing arts. All of that work will be led by our facilitators, Debbie, Jed, and Mike Struzik, throughout this year. We're very excited, and I just want to say thank you once again for your support of all that we do. Any questions?
You know, Mike, I just read something, and I don't remember where I read it, it could have been New York Times, whatever, that developing the arts helps children develop their brains creatively, not just for music or art or singing or whatever, but in all endeavors. And I thought that was really great. And when I see this, I say, wow.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I have a question. The Shining Lives, is it based on the book Radio Girls?
It is. Yes, it is.
Well, the selection, I mean, everything, you know, we always, we're so proud. It's one of those very important points of pride that we all have, visual performing arts in Brighton. And everyone so looks forward to the productions of the year, not just at the high school, but at the middle school. And it's just a, also, just a great, I think, testament to the work and the effort, all of our staff and our students and their parents, that we choose challenging things. We choose some things that are a little off the beaten path. We're not doing the same productions all the time that others are. And it's really, it allows everybody to have an opportunity. And we appreciate all that effort. And thank you, Mike, for helping lead the charge and for the report out this evening. And again, thanks to all those students and teachers that were able to be here tonight for performing. And it's just a great, great event. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Take care. Okay, we have a short consent agenda this evening, folks. May we have a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Prior to adjournment this evening, board members, anybody have anything else further this evening? Dr. Wall?
Maybe our greatest gift is a quick meeting.
That's just fantastic. I mean, we appreciate it all the way around. I know, again, thank you to all. And one, I left off before. Kim Lanes of Fame, I know, had a lot to do with the planning of everything, because she always does. So thank you also, Kim. But for everybody, everybody that was involved in tonight's celebration, we sincerely and truly appreciate it. And thank you so much. So with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved by Jalene, seconded by Marv. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.